Andy, looks like everyone's joined.
Awesome. We're ready to begin. Just let me know when you've started recording.
Oh, yes, we're good. We're ready.
Okay. With that, I will call this meeting of the ASD Board Governance Committee to order on Thursday, November 20th at 10:03 a.m. That would be my time. I'm out of state, 11:03 in Anchorage, Alaska. And I'm gonna let folks in the room go around and introduce themselves.
Wonderful. America Sullivan, Executive Assistant.
Tony Riley, Senior Director of Diversity Equity and Divisional Initiative.
Kelly Lessons, Board Member.
I'm Solbi.
Emily Brubaker from West High School.
Charlotte Nelson from South High School.
Girl Big was Board Member.
Here Brian, Superintendent.
Marty Lang, Chief of HR.
Andy Rallos, Chief Financial Officer.
Brent Gussis, Deputy Superintendent.
MB Communications.
Peggy Rankin, Senior Director Tower Management.
Amber Brubaker, General.
And online, we have myself, Member Higgins, and Member Wilson, and Ms. Grant from the Superintendent's Office.
And Member Donley.
And Member Donley. Thank you. So I'm gonna ask first, a motion to adopt the agenda, but I would entertain an amendment to move the SAB resolution to the front of the agenda. We do have students that are present. We'd like to hear from them, and then we'd like for them to go back to school.
Mr. Chair, it's a committee meeting. You don't need to adopt or amend an agenda. It's yours. Would you like?
Okay. Well, in that case, we'll make it more of a monarchy. We will go by the agenda, but I will move Item 7 up to the first slide. So with that, what I would do is, I know we have some guests that made a presentation to Student Advisory Board, and I think they're gonna do something similar for us. So I will turn the floor over, ask you to identify yourselves for the record, and tell us about your resolution.
I'm Solbi Willan.
My name's Emily Brubaker.
My name's Charlotte Nelson.
We're all part of Girl Scout Troop 436, and we have presented to the Student Advisory Board a resolution to, in its essentials, ban plastic glitter from the Anchorage School District and start an effort to replace it with biodegradable eco-friendly alternatives. So I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with the resolution.
Could you tell us a little bit of background about how the resolution could be?
So we created this resolution because microplastics are an ever-growing problem in the Anchorage community. Resolution focuses on planning on banning plastic glitter in schools because that's an example of everyday intentional microplastic.
You guys can slide that.
I don't know if there's that.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, it's an example of intentional microplastic. The official definition of microplastic is any piece of plastic less than five millimeters in size, which is roughly the pencil.
So our solution is a project that we started called the BioGlitter Initiative. And for this project, we have decided to start a resolution to ban plastic glitter from the Anchorage School District. So we can talk a little bit about our idea of getting rid of the plastic that is currently being used in schools and what we're planning on doing with that, and then we can continue with our other initiatives.
Okay, so we have a plan to do an art project with the remaining glitter in circulation, trying something that's really temporary, something a lot more permanent. We're hoping to do a student-led art project at Polaris where we'll create a resin and glitter sculpture that we're hoping will be displayed at the museum.
So we're starting a drive with the Girl Scout Council, and also once this resolution hopefully gets passed in ASD. So we'll be collecting the glitter that is currently being not used by art teachers and will not be used by art teachers, and we will use that to make the project that Solbi was talking about. So we have thought about what we should do to counteract the glitter that is already in circulation in the Anchorage School District. We have also thought ahead for the future. So for example, I have written and designed and published a children's book called All That Glitters Is Not Gold, and this centers around a girl who lives in Palmer, Alaska. And it's basically a book to introduce young children to microplastics and teach them about their harmful effects. So we're really hoping for this book for ages five to eight to be put in Mestee libraries, and we've already spoken to multiple librarians about doing so. And we think that this book would be a great opportunity for young children to learn about the environment in an understandable way. So I'd like to talk a little bit about another thing that we're doing concerning our initiative in our community. So we will be hosting a Girl Scout event called the Glitter Gala and Governance Workshop. And that will be on November 27th. The workshop has over 70 Girl Scout participants signed up, and it will consist of fun-filled bio-glitter activities from a photo booth to glitter-based painting to an informational station concerning microplastics in Alaska. Our main event of the workshop will be a governance panel where we will have four inspiring Alaskan women in government to share their experiences. There will be Mayor Suzanne LeFrance, Senator L.B. Ray Jackson, Representative Carolyn Hall, and School-remembered Kelly Lessons. We have gathered widespread support for this resolution across our community, as you can see, from Girl Scouts, from students, and teachers. We have received over 100 student signatures on an ASD-approved petition for the BioGlitter Initiative and the resolution's pass. Additionally, our troop has begun to implement our mission in Anchorage through teachers in ASD. On the October 23rd Art Teacher In-Service Meeting for Elementary School Art Teachers, we presented our project and the resolution. We also provided them with free teacher kits containing biodegradable glitter as well as free lesson plans and materials for the teachers to implement in their classrooms.
During this art teacher meeting, we also handed out a survey, and 100% of teachers who replied and took our survey agreed that they would swap plastic glitter in their classrooms with environmentally safe alternatives such as bio-glitter. And we have also gained recently momentous support from the ASD Student Advisory Board on November 18th when we presented our resolution. We have also been nationally recognized by the Aspen Institute Center for Rising Generations and Carnegie Young Leaders for Support and Preparedness. These national institutions believe that our mission is vital to the preservation and health of our environment and see as a worthwhile cause to support. And their funding is one of the main reasons why we were able to provide free bio-glitter to teachers as well as resources for students. We hope you consider our resolution as well. We want ASD to become a leader in sustainability, and passing the resolution would be a momentous step towards that. Your support would be vital in order to reduce the amount of microplastics in our community.
We would be happy to take any questions. Oh, go ahead.
Okay. I think your resolution calls for an education component among students. Is that right?
So that would be regarding the book that I've written. Potentially, we would have that be taught as a small unit or addition to the curriculum, just as a read-alove for young elementary school students to introduce them to microplastics.
And that it wouldn't be for all students? It would be certain grades?
Yes.
Okay.
It's written for a certain age group. And we would provide the books to teachers.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course. Does anybody else have any questions?
I'll say to the committee and to our guests that our position on governance is we decide whether to pass something to the full board for consideration. We don't actually adopt at this level, but if, assuming a positive vote, we will put it on the non-action items for the first meeting in December, and then it would come to the, as an action item, on the second meeting. And assuming the board adopts it, which I suspect they will, but when that happens, I would come back to the administration to see if this should take the form of an administrative regulation, whether or not it's something we actually need to put into board policy, you know, what the most appropriate action is. But my thought to the other committee members is that a positive action on this puts it on the agenda. Positive action by the board means we do something concrete that's lasting, that reflects the spirit of the resolution, the details of the resolution. So with that, any other discussions, either questions to our presenters or discussion among the committee?
Yeah, Member Holloman, Member Lessons. I had the privilege of attending the Student Advisory Board the other day, and the students asked a number of really important questions that I actually wanted to amplify here so that you can respond to those questions again, because I think they were really savvy. So the resolution says that the district would prohibit the purchase and distribution of plastic glitter in classrooms, art programs, and school-sponsored activities. And I think the students in SAB really keyed into beware glitter in our sports activities. I think runners and skiers, maybe more so than the swimmers. They didn't specify their sports. But so how how would ASD enforce, you know, would ASD enforce the personal use of glitter in an after-school sport competitions?
And that was a very good question that we got from the Student Advisory Board. So I myself was part of a cross-country running team for West earlier this year, and we did use plastic glitter initially for these races and events for the sport. And actually, I took it upon myself to bring biodegradable glitter to the events, and people use that instead. And of course, this resolution would not affect the students since they're sort of out of the school district's jurisdiction on prohibiting the plastic glitter and things like that. So we would, the resolution aims to prohibit the Anchorage School District's purchase and use, but it would not apply to any students who decide to bring it, since that is their own personal property.
Thanks. I thought it was a great question, and I think some members of SAB were very passionate about their personal use of glitter. That was my main question that I wanted to serve up to you guys. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your presentation and your time.
Of course. Thank you all for hearing us.
Hey, I just wanted to, from a communications lens, you make me proud to work here. I really am impressed with how you presented. You're very thoughtful, personable, articulate. You looked at everyone here. Are you their mom? Very proud mom of mine. But just from a communications lens, I'm really proud of what you did. I'm proud to work for this organization. So you did a very good presentation.
Thank you.
And I will say that Ms. Brubaker has shared this project with me some time ago, and I talked about sort of the general timeline and sort of that the resolution should move through the SAB first in order for the board to consider it. And so she's, they've put quite a bit of hard work in, but they had already done so much of the work ahead of time, including that national recognition from the Carnegie and Aspen Institutes, which I think is just really admirable. So, thank you.
Any other member comments or any other discussion? I would echo Mr. Tim's comments as well. I think the idea of writing a book that can go in our school libraries is an awesome addition to this. I mean, obviously, you're looking at far more than a simple resolution. And it speaks really well, I think, in terms of accomplishing what you set out to do. I'm gonna say the past couple of weeks, I've been privileged to walk up and down the beaches in Maui. And I pick up little pieces of plastic, like the vast majority are no bigger or not as big as a thumbnail. And the idea is I'm saving them from being microplastics in the near future because they're just washing around on the beach. There's a lot of it out there. I don't know what it is we're making that's bright blue, but boy, there's a ton of it in the ocean. So with seeing no hands, seeing no one else looking for discussion, I'll ask Ms. Sullivan to poll the committee members for a vote.
Mr. Chair, you might just ask if any committee member objects to moving the resolution forward to the full board.
Can do that. I'll say without objection, this will move to the next ASD Board meeting. I'll pause in case either Member Wilson or Member Higgins wants to make an objection.
I have no objection.
I have no objection, and I'm very impressed with the presentation and appreciate a great generation. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Again, thank you to the presenters. Now, get back to class, do your homework tonight. And, but thank you for bringing this to us. And like I say, usually as a non-action item, there won't be very much discussion on it during the first meeting. But in the second meeting, it will come up as an action item and be voted on. So this will be done this coming month. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay. Moving. Moving back to Item 1 on the original agenda, the policy review for the 4,000 sections. Again, I'm not gonna set time for all of us to read this at the moment, but if anyone had things they wanted to raise under any amendments or anything they wanted us to look at in particular in this section.
I will say, Member Holloman, that the administration has reviewed these and doesn't have any concerns with this batch of policy review items.
Thank you. Seeing no hands, no indication of discussion, move to Item 2, Policy Changes on Resignation. I assume this is brought by the administration. I'll turn the floor to you to discuss it.
Yeah, Items 2 and 3 are, were part of our triennial policy review. At the last meeting, we noted a couple of changes that we wanted to bring forward. This is just those track changes that we're proposing. One, just a slight change under the resignation policy. It had language basically saying, once somebody's resignation had been processed, that they could not withdraw it. We do at certain times allow people to rescind their NOR when the vacancy still persists and we still have a need to fill it. And so we just added language consistent with that practice. So that was the one change here, other than some housekeeping items of just capitalizing the district for stylistic consistency.
Any questions from committee members or those present? I can't see the room very well, so people can feel free to speak out. If there is no objection, oh, go ahead.
I don't have any objections. Thank you.
Hearing no discussion, I'll say this will be passed to the full board for their consideration. We move to the next item, Changes to Language About Teacher Aides and Parent Professions.
Yeah, similar to the last one, this is, a lot of this is just housekeeping. We no longer use the term predominantly teacher aides. We just use parent professionals to describe those folks who work on the classified side in our classrooms to support students. And then down below, the substantive change here is just striking through the previous language that existed in statute for what they were required to have in terms of education, and it substitutes the current statutory language.
I can't help but notice the change from small d to big D. I'm wondering if anyone in the room knows how long that controversy has been going on now. I remember something from the very early 2000s where it was a linguistic argument. Anyone in the room have questions, comments about these changes?
Member Holloman, it's Member Lessons. The only thing that stuck out to me, and I'm not a member of the committee, is that the words "and volunteer" in the first sentence sort of stand out as maybe not appropriate if we're talking about credentials that are required. I think I understand the sentiment that volunteers are welcome in schools, but that seems like we don't have a volunteer or professional workforce.
I think that's, that is true. I think we would.
And we pay them, right? If you're a parent professional, then you're on it. You're on a salary.
I meant volunteer.
So I would, I am not a member of the committee, but I would suggest striking the words "and volunteer" before this moves forward.
And I'll ask the administration if they want to make that change.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go with that.
Yeah, no objection.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Although there is, actually, as I look at this now, there is a reference to volunteer assistance, but that's, I mean, right there, CF 1240 Volunteer Assistance. So I don't really know how to.
Do you want, we can take this back one more time and look at that and cross-reference it with the volunteer assistance policy and bring it back in December. I don't think there's any sense of urgency around these changes, so I appreciate that.
Just one more member, not a member of the committee, but.
Yeah. Happy to do that. Happy to do that.
Uh, in that case, this will be withdrawn from the agenda for today and brought back at a later time. Uh, that moves us to item number four, lottery admission procedures, et cetera. Any questions or does the administration wanna?
We've been working on changing our lottery procedures, um, and this, uh, is the culmination of developing AR for the lottery, um, procedures. There is a pretty significant change in what we're going to be doing. I'm here, so I'd like Robin, who's been leading that, to kind of explain what that is.
So, um, the biggest change in the lottery procedures is no longer holding on to a waitlist for students at any lottery school. Um, having a clean slate at the beginning of every year. Uh, we came back to the meeting today. Um, I know Member Jacob said requested that we add, add a sentence that states that we will be, um, giving re, an annual report summarizing our lottery trends, our compliance areas, and improvement, um, and is presented to you at the school board. We do that currently with our guardrail, um, with underrepresented students in the lottery, but we certainly can be pulling data from the lottery itself to be able to make sure that that's what we're doing and documenting. So in addition to those changes, we, as principal supervisors, will be working with our principals, um, making sure that students are not declined from the lottery. Um, meetings are being held within the schools to speak to what they utilize as curriculum, how they can support students, what that looks like for the student, et cetera. So, but the biggest change is the, um, release of that waitlist for all students. And we're hoping to get communication to families starting in the next couple of weeks. Um, you know, making sure that they have that understanding when we hit February one, when the lottery opens.
I have one question. Um, under, on the first page, under, uh, applicability, the last sentence says it does not apply to attendance zone assignments or immersion programs in I B H G. Could you explain what you mean, what the administration means about it not applying to immersion programs? Because my loose understanding is that you have to lottery into any of the immersion programs. So what does that sentence mean? It's a, it's the last sentence under applicability. It does not apply to immersion programs. It's sort of the second section in that sentence. Does not apply attendant, to attendance zone assignments or immersion programs in I B.
Okay, yeah, we can take that, um, that the immersion program's out of there. Yeah, we can strike that sentence. Because it does.
Okay, so the whole sentence needs to be.
Yeah, we can, we can stretch that whole sentence. Except for.
I think that probably why that was there originally and it might have gotten moved over in some way is that those students that qualify for HD are automatically, um, enrolled. They can enroll in their space form. Um, and then those students that qualify for immersion that would be at, say, a government hill or a turning, and they aren't. They don't have to enter a new lottery to get into the middle school or the high school. They, they can travel right to the program.
There's a separate process.
Soon as they get in, uh, then they're in those.
So it's a separate. Moving from school to school, right? Like from Rogers Park to, you know, rolling to the west. And so that's where we were, we're thinking that they wouldn't go into the lottery necessarily. They're just rolled into that program unless the family is declined to go into that program. Uh, from there, because we were having those conversations at the same time that we have the waitlist and lottery, um, conversations, so. So it can be expanded upon.
I think you take that out of there a little.
Okay, okay.
We could, I mean, we're, we're gonna be starting this for this upcoming lottery, um.
And we want it to be very clear for.
So we'll make sure we'll get that out.
So parent, I mean, so if, if I was a parent who, I'm fifty-seven on a waitlist in some school this year and my kid didn't get in, that means that I need to put in new lottery application next year. And I'm like fourteen or eighty-three.
Or one.
Or one, or four hundred and two. Okay, but, but if you're still interested in that choice program or that non-neighborhood school, you just need to keep lottery.
Yeah, so, so, you know, as we go through schools, we'll keep in that, say, kindergarten's go into, say, Turnigan Elementary in the Russian immersion program and it's full and there's a waitlist. Um, if, if kids move out those first couple of years, other kids will get put into the school. But as, as of, you know, right before the lottery runs for the next year, those lists are pulled and then start all over so that everybody has a chance to get into the school.
Okay, but all notification will go out to all parents?
Yes.
In the time, I mean, the whole communication.
We're gonna be rolling it all out to, to all families starting next month and then continuing all the way up to February. Well, all the way through, we're gonna continue all the way for our first run of the lottery and even our second round in July. So, and those, the first lottery, they can be on that waitlist until July. And then after July, those students can, will continue until, I keep saying the date, January thirty-first, because our lottery roll starts to, it starts over on February first. So we will just clean it out every January to make sure that the new lottery is, everybody has a new application.
And that gives us the opportunity after the winter break, if families leave over the winter break, you still can use the, the lists for that first part of the second semester.
Member Higgins, did you still have a question?
Yes, thank you. Uh, and I'm looking at this and I'm, and I'm trying to, uh, sort this. So this lottery system applies for all of our schools that have a lottery and that goes for all charter schools?
Yes.
So, uh, I'm looking at this and I see where, um, you know, siblings first and then multiple, and district-wide applicants will be. Uh, my, my concern there is, you know, we have like stream as on the east, you know, that, that area has the priority and I can see that being other, well, potentially, um, is it. And can we make a change to that issue?
We, you broke up really bad, Member Higgins, we didn't catch most of that.
I tried to, can you hear me okay right now?
Yes.
Okay, um, I'm looking at this, this particular document and, and it gives a priority, of course, you got a family kind of thing. And then after that, it talks about it being district-wide. We have within stream, something that's a little different, is, is, it may be family, but it has it where you're living on the east side and then it goes district-wide. Is that need to be reflected in this policy?
I don't believe that it needs to be reflected in the policy. It, um, it occurs without the, without it in the policy currently, Member Higgins. And they already are taking that, the preferential to the east side first to fill their seats. And then they pull from the rest of the district outside of that.
For my reservation, times we don't, we, we say we don't need to change the policy because we're not following it. But it's, so I, I'd rather change the policy to provide that support. Because right now it looks like that's a violation of the policy and I don't want it to be a violation.
Hey, uh, Member Higgins, when you, when you see attendance area students, that east, east side would be attendance area students. It's part of siblings and attendance area students. Attendance area for stream is the east side.
Okay, so that's, that's viewed as acceptable, because I know it makes reference district-wide, that's why I asked. It is a assigned area for, um, uh, a charter school.
Yeah, there, that's what that is for the, our, some of our schools have that attendance area also, where applicable, um, including siblings. And then you notice that district-wide applicants comes after that fact.
Okay, so, so any charter school can say I'm designating a particular area if they want to on that.
Do you think that sentence would be?
Is that what I'm understanding?
Uh, we're, we're kinda talking about what a verbiage would be like to ma, to cover what you're asking us.
Yeah, I, I just don't know what kind of verbiage we're there. If we need to do something, I'm just thinking we should probably do it. And I do support what stream is doing. I think it makes a lot of sense. I can also see it being a misuse, uh, to some degree, uh, and I don't want that to happen within it. So I just, like I said, I was, the, the priority categories, I was reading that the siblings, of course, and families with multiple, and then after that, the language is district-wide applicant. It is signed with a number, but I just saw restricting, uh, what screen is doing and I don't wanna restrict it.
You know, if we, if we just. We have other, we don't, we, you know, we have other schools also such as the Denali Lottery and stuff. I mean, I thi, I think this covers this.
So they do siblings and then they also do attendance area because they have attendance area, um, students that are there and then they have district-wide af, after that for the Montessori portion of it. So it couldn't be necessarily specifically to charter because our alternative schools are also, um, doing that as well.
Uh, uh, yeah, I've seen it. Right, the attendance area does it. I don't know how the attendance area is determined, but I see the language in there now. As long as the, the district is working with them, I'm happy with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're very.
Yeah, I, I do think it, we might publicize that a little more. I, I don't see a reason to change the policy, but I think just because it's a lottery, the immediate assumption is everybody's got the same shot. Um, but I think there's a good reason for the exceptions. I don't wanna change it. But I do think it's fair that everybody's aware of that, that there are some preferential areas.
I, I, I believe that on the lottery application, it's written right there as, as part of the application too.
Anyone else have questions? If, if not, I've got one other suggestion. And again, I don't think this is something I wanna write in policy, but, um, partly has come up in looking at the rightsizing situation and the percentage of parents that do use, uh, something other than their, uh, zone, attendance zone. If there's some way to put a question in that asks why people are making a choice, why they're entering the lottery. And I realize we wanna do this in a way that, that doesn't make people think they've gotta give a certain answer in order to be considered. But, um, you know, I, I look at Eagle River and I wonder why, uh, Eagle Academy students don't go to Birchwood. And, and I have some idea, I think I know why that may be the case, but just as an example. But it could be really helpful at moments when we're having to make some of these decisions to be able to look at what people's reasoning is for going somewhere other than their neighborhood school. I don't know if there's an easy way to fold a question like that in and, you know, obviously it'll take a year or two to really accumulate good data. But I did wanna make that suggestion to the administration that there are moments where understanding why parents are doing what they're doing could be really helpful to the board and the administration in trying to make the decisions we have to.
Thank you, Member Holloman. We, um, can see if our current system, the legacy system, is able to add, have that additional piece included in it. But that is definitely what we are looking at in a new software system that is upcoming for the lottery. We are putting those in and we have multiple choices that parents would be able to pick. You know, we didn't wanna give them like a paragraph to write, but we do have multiple choices. They will be able to pick as to why they were choosing to go to one school over another. So we do have that in mind so that we can pull reports for you as well and be able to report on that.
We do know that it does not work in the whole system, but, and we are gonna be using the for at least one more year, Member Holloman, because we are getting ready to roll out a brand-new system over the course of like just this next week. For February and the company, um, acts the whole software. So we're kinda back to square one on that.
One, one more reason I didn't wanna put it in policy or anything. I think we do need to move in that direction. Any other questions, discussion? If not, without objection from Member Higgins or Member Wilson, we will move this to the, uh, full board agenda.
Okay.
Hearing none, uh, that will take us to our next item, uh.
This, this is an AR.
Yeah.
Right, okay, I apologize, yeah, I missed that. Uh, so that brings us to our next item, number five, also an AR, uh, personnel and harassment.
So this is just an update from last meeting as well. Uh, Member Higgins wanted us to, um, explore what would happen a bit more clearly if an employee wanted to, um, make a complaint against their direct supervisor. So we added some language here. I worked with HR to also, um, add a form in our JIRA complaints portal that's, uh, rolling out next month that is explicit to employee complaints. So we just added an additional bullet point there that allows them to submit their employee, um, grievance through a portal for discretion, um, and, uh, just clear language about who they can report to. So for fear of retribution, if they didn't wanna report to their direct supervisor, they could report to anyone that's in, um, their chain. And then the other recommendation was around communication. We've set it up in the, uh, complaint portal so that all of our complaints have a response that would give next steps um, and sort of a timeline and points of contact that would be necessary. So we can say clearly that as long as they go through the electronic process, that they would receive that communication. But if for some reason it was received, um, in another communication, we don't have a way of tracking that. So that's the purpose of just the last sentence.
Any questions or comments from those present, Member Higgins?
Thank you. Um, when you, when you talk about, uh, you can go to the sentence above, the supervisor, the supervisor chain of command within their division, what are you referring to with division?
So it would be within the chiefs, either, it would be like essentially within whatever chiefs, that chief that falls under, the department falls under.
So, so if, if the complaint was against the, I don't know, pick on the human resources officer for fun, uh, and if the complaint was about him, where would they go if he's at the, if he's the top?
So that goes back to the question.
I think the third bullet addresses that. The superintendent's office is their, um, opportunity if the complaint itself involves a chief of a division, which would be the, the highest ranking position within that division. So it then leaves that open to a direct communication with the superintendent's office.
Is that language in here? Am I missing?
Yeah, it's, it's the third bullet. So it's through, it's through the portal, it's through anybody above their supervisor within that chain of command or the superintendent's office if it includes the chief, um, which is at the top of that chain of command in each division.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, the thing that.
Pat, um, you're continuing to break up some. You might try turning your video off. And that may make your audio come through more cleanly.
Makes me look better too. Is that better? Little bit?
Yeah, we can hear you now, Pat.
Okay, thank you. Um, and, and like I said, it looks better too. I understand. Um, I, 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 I like the changes. I appreciate that. It's got, it clearly establishes a better, uh, better relationship. The only other thing in, in here that I would like to see at some point, and I don't know how I wanna do it, not right now, but some type of report just giving us something, an overview of how this system, a, a number of types of concerns that they're getting. Safety concerns, this or that, or some other issues, but right now I'm not, I don't wanna propose anything like that at this time.
Any other questions or comments?
Um, yes, I, I just have a quick one. It's actually not an AR, it's a BP, so. I will change that.
It is an AR.
To that, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I was looking at that first line.
Try to do a better job of alerting the full board. Um, also ask Ms. Sullivan to send out to the full board. Uh, um, also ask Miss Sullivan to send out to the full board notes when we've reviewed A Rs for adoption. Um, because it doesn't go to the full board, I think it's good that we just let them know that these came before us and were looked at because in essence, we're reviewing this for the whole board. Any other questions? Seeing none, uh, that brings us to item six, um, child abuse and neglect. This was brought by uh, member Bellamy and she.
Yes, um, we were going to potentially move this one as well since she would not be available.
Um, she said if she wasn't able to um, be present electronically, if we would hold it for our next governance meeting. So, and that's my understanding of what she wanted to have happen with it.
We are holding.
Yes, so we, she's not, yes.
Can I ask one question about it? Or, I suppose that means don't even bother now.
Um, this, this, the group that's doing the work was gonna be here, but they, we, we told them they didn't have to come. I'd rather not, you know what I mean?
Okay.
And it also, uh, we engaged with um, an attorney to get a legal opinion on this and some advice as to what language to add. And we just received that opinion. I think this last night or this morning, and so we really had time to digest that. So I think a delay till December will allow all the parties to be in the room and, and, and probably our best recommendation to go forward.
We actually had two different groups of people doing parallel work and not realizing it. And then we brought them all together in the last week, so.
I'll hold my question, try to remember.
So, Mr. Chair, it sounds like we're gonna move this to next month and move on?
Yes, um, that brings us to item seven, which we have already covered. And that brings us to our next couple of meetings, December eighteenth, January twenty-second. Anyone have anything to say for the good of the order? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, one second.
Mm-hmm.
But I just want to talk, you know, we have a, a focus on the audit-type process and I want to talk about that just briefly. Um, I, I have um, an option here because working with council great city schools doesn't give us uh, over, uh, oversight over the audit. It allows the superintendent to uh, control that what we are or not shared. And that doesn't make it an audit uh, of the operation. Now, I think it will work very well for um, some of the programs and um, um, uh, uh, dealing with projects and, and, and the buildings and things of that nature. We can do something with them and I want to go forward with that. But for the other programs, we don't have that. I haven't been able to get any names or contacts to even talk to the auditors with purchasing. We were gonna use one of them for the oversight for the committee to implement the changes. Uh, the president of the council of great city schools agreed that would be a good thing and I still can't get it. So I just feel like that's not a functional type of system. Uh, but I can work on getting uh, individuals in the community to do an oversight-type review and to make a, make something like that. And I would like to go in that direction. That would leave it reporting to the board and not through the superintendent, under, under the superintendent's control as to what information we're allowed and not allowed. And I just thought I'd raise that to, to open it up for discussion.
Anyone have comments or questions?
I will add that in the nineties, they had uh, uh, groups of different communities coming in for different departments, doing reviews, recommendations. It got high uh, marks from the community because it, first of all, it showed a lot of effectiveness, success on that, on that standpoint. It was, it was, it gave positive feedback, uh, but it also made people reassured that we were doing a good job in those areas. And uh, so it's a multiple purpose. It said with some recommendations, but it wasn't a, a big significant impact.
Kind of, kind of harkens back to the budget review teams, um, or budget review committees that we had quite some time ago. Any other questions or comments?
Uh, Mr. Chair, only, only just noting, you don't need to ask a motion to adjourn. You can do that yourself.
True. I, I like to share the power a little bit. I, I can see that Jim is saying something, but he's muted, so. Um, if there are no other comments, um, I will call the meeting to a close at eleven fifty-one. And thank you all for attendance and uh, participation.
Thanks.
See you in a couple of weeks.
Bye-bye.
Adjourn.